We're going to have a good time. We're going to lend our voice. We want to hear what you have to say to make sure that the candidates know that they're not just going to roll up in here. We're just going to have a time. Welcome to the Black Women's Roundtable, the Power of the Sister Vote National Town Hall here in Charleston, South Carolina. Good. So are we ready to roll? I want to introduce to you my sister friend, this powerful woman and the powerful woman of woman of God. Those of you that don't know her need to get to know her. She's our voice. She's been lending her voice in the world of civil rights for a while. Sometimes she's the only lady at the table.
That's right.
But she won't be moved. And I thank her for holding her spot along with those alpha males that's in this particular area. We know them well. We know them well. Ladies and gentlemen, I introduce to you Ms. Hello, South Carolina.
Hello.
Hello, nation.
Hello.
It's movement time. Can you repeat after me? It's movement time.
It's movement time.
It's power of the sister vote time.
Power of the sister vote.
It's voting time.
It's voting time.
It's vote and be counted time.
Yes.
It's time to change this country.
It's time to change this country.
Thank you so much. So I want to first say, thank you, thank you, thank you first, all of you and all of those who are watching on RolandMartin.com, RolandMartinUnfiltered and Essence.com. I want to thank our, we are coalition of sisters. And so we wanted to come together, we were here four years ago in the same space. Thank you, International Longshoremen's Association. So can we give them a round of applause for thank you for hosting us again this year? And Clayola will have folks to come up from I L A. And so I want to thank our co-hosts. Black Women's Roundtable is the women and girls' power building and empowerment arm of the National Coalition on Black Civic Participation. And I'm blessed to have the opportunity to facilitate that process. If you say lead, but you know, I can lead from the front and I can lead from behind. So I can lead from the side. And so this is a partnership between Black Women's Roundtable, National Action Network. Can you give them a hand?
Yeah.
A. Philip Randolph Institute.
Yeah.
And our, our magazine for sisters, Essence.
Yeah.
And so we're not going to belabor the evening. My role is to welcome you and to turn it over to our, one of our next co-hosts, Ms. Clayola Brown. And I'll give a few acknowledgements later. So I'll turn it over to my sister, Ms. Clayola Brown.
Thank you. Uh, clap. Okay, I'm one of them comeback him, alright? Born and bred in Charleston, South Carolina, right on Beach Avenue on Union Hike. That's what I'm talking about. So there is no fake to what the sister knows and can do. So tonight I wanted to say, along with the other two leaders that are standing here, two beautiful sisters of power, that we have an obligation to make sure that we reach one and teach one. And don't, after you get to the top, stop, put them arms out to the side and drag another sister with you.
Yeah.
Drag them with you. Drag them with you. There'll be an opportunity, I hope, with our conversing in between or afterwards or whatever, to tell you a little bit more about the A. Philip Randolph Institute. I can do that in about two seconds right now. But I won't belabor it because I have a powerful sister standing next to me that I want to introduce to you. And I say that because we standing in their house right now. And this secretary, treasurer of this organization, of finance of this organization, when I went to her to say, can we come again? She said, yeah. No hesitation at all. I love seeing sisters of power in decision-making positions.
Yes.
That's who this is, Sister Yvette Flowers, standing next to me. So I want her to, that's right, give it to her. But before Yvette speaks, I want to ask those of you who are here from the A. Philip Randolph Institute, and I know you're still coming in, you will see Crystal all over the place. Crystal, I see you here. And there are others that will be showing up in this room as we gather and talk along. But I like my job, so anybody else from A P R I I have to acknowledge before I go on? Okay. But please, our Sister Yvette Flowers, who runs this house, please. How are everybody doing tonight? Looking good? Y'all ready for a good discussion?
Yes.
First, you already heard my name, Yvette Flowers. I am the Financial Secretary for International Longshoremen's Local 1422 in historical Charleston, South Carolina. I have held this position for the last 12 years and am a second-generation longshoreman. Our membership and leadership of Local 1422 would like to welcome all the speakers and our community to our house. Just to tell you a little bit about longshoremen's, if you don't know about longshoremen's. Our men and women work every port on the East Coast. Longshoreman jobs have always been predominantly male jobs. But over the past 20 years, women has joined the industry.
Alright.
Joining the rank-and-file membership of this local in every port on the East Coast. The wages that the industry provides has afforded many women the ability to take care of their households and families very well. So welcome to our house, the house that labor built. Tonight, we have the pleasure of hosting the Black Women's Roundtational National Event, the Power of the Sister Vote. Don't we have a lot to say, ladies?
Yes.
Don't we want a lot?
Yes.
They always overlook us, but we are the powerhouse in all of our houses. So let's get this conversation going and let's enjoy ourselves tonight. Thank you for being here with us at Local 1422.
Thank you. Can you give I L A another round of applause? And I want to ask the Black Women's Roundtable members who are here, folks from here and where, just stand up, wave your hand. Stand up. I'm going to call your name out, okay? Just stand up, Black Women's Roundtable. Thank you all so very much. Some of y'all are also board members of the coalition, so the double-double. And thank you all so much. And so I want to acknowledge, because you know, it takes a couple dollars to pull these things together, right? So I want to not make the mistake of not acknowledging and thanking. Thank you. It's easy to do, right? Easy to do. And it's not easy to, for folks who are some of these spaces and places to provide the resources to our community. So I definitely do not want to miss that opportunity. So I want to first thank Oxfam in the house. So stand up, Sister Joy Owen. You'll hear from Joy a little later on from Oxfam. Want to thank Ask Carol Jordan to stand up from Labor Project for Working Families, Family Values at Work, sponsor. In absence, Naomi and Nehemiah Cohen Foundation. Let them hear you. Say thank you, thank you with the claps. And lastly, but not least, the State Infrastructure Fund. So thank you. Just give all of the sponsors and supporters a hand. And then now, I already mentioned our media partners, so I would like to now introduce our co-host and also, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I already did that. Introduce our moderator. This is not my job, it's Trudy's job.
Absolutely. Hi, everybody. Okay, so we're getting ready to start. We want to, yeah.
We're going to go back there.
What a privilege and an honor to do this, this part of the intro. I affectionately call our moderator Sweet Face, because every time I see her, that little sweet face is just amazing on camera. It is my honor and privilege to introduce to you Tessa Spencer. Tessa joined the ABC News 4 team as a reporter in 2011. A Charleston native, Tessa graduated from Bishop England High School and received, oh, shout out for BA. Received her BA degree in mass communications from Baptist College at Charleston, now known as Charleston Southern University. Following college, Tessa served in the U.S. Army Reserves as a veteran of the First Gulf War. Tessa, thank you for your service. Can we give her a hand for that? Her broadcasting career spans 30 years, even though she does not look a day over 30. With stops in Greenville, South Carolina, Nashville, Tennessee, where she also earned a spot as a cheerleader for the NFL Tennessee Titans and Providence, Rhode Island. Tessa returned home to Charleston in 1999 and worked as one-half of Z-93's Breakfast Club. Tessa and her co-host earned numerous awards and recognitions, including a proclamation from Charleston Mayor Joe Riley naming June 21st Tessa and Baby J Day. As a voice-over artist, Tessa can be heard locally and nationally as the television announcer for the Gospel Stellar Awards and Mentoring Kings. A mother of two boys, Tessa enjoys photography, making jewelry, reading, and fitness. You can watch Tessa weekday evenings as a co-anchor on ABC News 4. And she can also be heard weekly, 10 a.m. through 3 p.m. on Cumulus Broadcasting Radio Station, Magic 107.3. Ladies and gentlemen, give a round of applause to our Sweet Face, Tessa Spencer. Good evening, good evening. And I affectionately call Trudy B. Trudy B., what's up? What's happening? Always happy to be of service to Trudy Lucas. She does great things for the community and beyond. Really quick, I want to invite our panelists up to the stage right now. I will be introducing them and then we will get underway. Our first panelist is Vivian Anderson, founder of Every Black Girl. Next, we have the President of the South Carolina National Council of Negro Women, Andrea Casey. Associate Director of Cancer Disparities, Professor, Public Health Sciences of the Medical University of South Carolina, Dr. Marvella E. Author, CEO, Exceptional Black Women Lead, Senior Advisor, Black Women's Roundtable, Dr. Avis Jones to Weaver. And finally, the President of the National Action Network, Columbia Founder, CEO, Justice And the National Council of Negro Women, Andrea Casey. All right, ladies, thank you. And thank you once again to Trudy and the BWR, Power of the Sister Vote Town Hall Coast Organizations, the Black Women's Roundtable, Essence, A. Philip Randolph Institute, the National Action Network, for inviting me to serve as your moderator for the panel tonight. Are we ready to get started? We're ready? Are you guys ready?
Yes.
Recently, in September of 2019, BWR and Essence released the results of their fifth annual poll that described what the top issues black women across generations are concerned about for themselves, their families, and communities. Specifically, black women 18 and over shared race, pocketbook, life or death, safety issues, saying that they were their top concerns impacting them, their families, and communities, including racism, a rise in hate crimes, high cost of housing, gun violence, and income inequality and equal pay. Now, top issues for young black women 18 to 35, which would be Generation Z and Millennials, top issues are high cost of housing, racism, the rise in hate crimes, and income inequality, and also equal pay. Over 95% of the over 1,000 black women across generations who responded to the BWR Essence poll said they planned to vote in 2020 and identified the top priorities for the black community have shifted over the past year to criminal justice and policing reform. The rise in hate crimes and racism strongly impacts black women and their families. Here's question one for Tiffany, Andrea, and Avis. Given the concerns of black women in the last BWR Essence poll, how do we move a justice agenda forward in this very polarized political environment?
So I guess I'll start. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure being here. You cannot move a justice agenda forward without having black women present at the table and black women from all socioeconomic backgrounds. I think Shirley Chisholm said, in regards to being at the table, bring your folding chair. And that's what black women has been doing for centuries, bringing our folding chairs. But then we have to reach back and we have to make sure that our other sister voices are being heard. So that's one way to move a justice agenda forward, is having different voices present at the table, different black women voices. Another way would be to elect more black women and to support black women when they're running for office. Not just running for president, but running in their state and local elections, and also supporting black women when they're on boards as well. So I think like school boards and different board agencies are kind of looked over. So supporting black women in the positions that they currently hold, supporting black women while they're running, and also ensuring that we are bringing our folding chairs to the table and reaching back to pull other black women's voices in as well.
Thank you. Absolutely. Hi, great to be here. I think one of the key parts of that question is this issue of how do we advance this justice agenda in the polarized times that we're facing right now? And I think it's important that we acknowledge that this is an unnaturally, unnatural level of polarization that we're facing. And I'm using that term unnatural very intentionally, because there are a lot of people that have a lot to gain by dividing us. And they have invested a lot of money and strategy and time into figuring out how to divide us and how to get us so frustrated that we just throw up our hands and we walk away. And I think it's very incumbent upon us as the leaders in our communities to be that voice of reason in the room to say, not again. This will not happen to us again. You know, it's quite important that we recognize that in moments of high levels of competition and high stakes, there are going to be emotions, there's going to be a lot of heated tempers. But there needs to be a voice of reason in the room to say that this is bigger than you, this is bigger than any one specific day. The decisions that we make in our vote that's coming up in 2020 is not just going to impact this nation for the next four years, it'll be impacting this nation for the next four decades at least. I think we need to really understand what's at stake and communicate that to others. Because one of the issues that I find that we oftentimes overlook in these moments is the importance of the judicial system and how the people that we elect impact and make appointments that have lifetime implications. They will have justices that they will put on the Supreme Court, that they will put in the federal judiciary system that will be there for the next 40 years. That means they will not only be impacting your life, they'll be impacting your children's lives, they'll be impacting your grandchildren's lives. And so we don't have time to be divided. We don't have that luxury. If we do nothing else, we need to communicate the vital nature of this decision and to also communicate the fact that there are forces that are being used right now trying to make this particular disunity that we are experiencing real particularly targeted towards us. No community was more targeted with, for example, the Russian interference last time than the black community. And you know why? Because they knew our power. It's time that we know our power too.
Tiffany and Avis, I agree with you totally. And I would like to say that since 1935, when National Council Negro Women was organized by Dr. Mayor McLeod Bethune, our agenda at that time was public policy. And Dr. Bethune saw fit that she had to get a coalition of African-American organizations in order to address African-Americans' agenda. And with our current Chair, Dr. Jeanetta Cole, and our Executive Director, Janice Mathis, they're keeping us at the table and it's relevant in there. And what you said, Avis, is so true. We have to maintain, we have to see that what is going on in the country is to get us off-focus and have us be upset about things totally different from what they're doing. And I say that only because my son tells me that all the time, because he works for the federal government. I know he's going to kill me for saying that, but, but a lot is going on behind the scenes just to keep us off-focus. And so we have to really pay attention to what is really going on. And we also need to hold them accountable, be more engaged, and not just on the national level, but also on the local level, starting with our school boards and our constituent boards. And we know what's going on in Charleston right now regarding education system and single-member districts, and rather, we want to vote at large. All of those are really serious issues that we need, we all need to be addressing, those of us who are here in the area.
All right. Thank you very much. I want to remind everyone too, that as we're going along with the conversation, if something strikes a chord with you, or if you have any questions for our panelists, we will open the floor where you'll be able to ask questions, following our main questions this evening. Now, this next question I would like for each of you ladies to please answer. And Tiffany, we're going to start with you. As I stated earlier, the poll results indicated that the top four issues overall for black women include the rise in hate crimes, the high cost of housing, gun violence, and income inequality. We know that these are some of black women's primary issue concerns, first of all. But what are the other critical issues black women are really concerned about, especially as it relates to helping them to choose who they will vote for in the 2020 national, state, and local elections?
I knew you meant Vivian.
Vivian, yes, ma'am.
My sister. So thank you so much for having me. I've been thinking a lot about, I'm trying to figure out the correct way to frame this, the criminal justice reform and policing reform, specifically how it relates to education. We keep saying we were here four years ago? Absolutely. Four years ago, we saw a video go viral of a young girl, a black girl assaulted in his classroom. We saw just recently a video go viral of a six-year-old arrested. So when we start talking about what does policing reform look like on all those levels, we really get to talk about and really push. I'm looking for a more concrete plan, other than the buzzwords that are thrown out, that's addressing not how to keep a school safe, because to me, how do I keep this building safe? But how are my children, my black girls, safe in schools, right? And so I think that's one of the things that sits, especially because of the work I do, that really sits on my heart and really makes me say, so what are you going to do for our black girls? When we talk about criminalization, look at how our girls are being criminalized in schools. So we can have school choice, but if they still are going to be arrested, called into, being sent to mental institutions without a parent knowing, what are we really, and especially because we know education is the foundation of liberation, right? And so that's something that just really sits on me as a concern. And we know that there are folks working to do it, like Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, who has the End Pushout Act, right? How are they getting behind it? We have, and that's a detailed plan. We have yet to hear that from any of the folks who are like looking for my vote.
I think what's a concern of mine is a woman's right to choose. I think we should, we've got all these men around the table making decisions as it relates to our right to choose, what we want to do with our bodies, and so forth. And health issues is another, because we, our health plan here in South Carolina, especially as it relates to Medicare and eligibility, and our government choose still not to support the Affordable Care Act here in South Carolina. So we have a lot of health issues in rural areas of South Carolina. And we need to be mindful of those persons who are running for office and see how that's going to affect us all in rural areas across the country. And then all the changes is coming through the SNAP program and is disappropriated in how it is affecting African-American families across the country. We need to be conscious of how that's going to affect all of us.
Thank you, Andrea. Marvella?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So one thing that's been on my mind is this curious dichotomy that black women find ourselves in. So we are black and we are women. But we saw in the civil rights movement that quite often, as has already been said, black women were not at the table. Then previously, in the women's rights movement for the right for women to vote, that movement primarily reflected the needs of white women. So we didn't fit there either. White women got the right to vote, black women didn't. But it was called the women's movement. So we are in this dichotomy where we are de-feminized, treated as not women, treated as beasts of burden, treated as the bearers of all of the crap of the society. And sometimes we buy into it in the myth of the strong black woman, and that is killing us. So from my perspective, I feel like Sojourner Truth, remember she said, ain't I a woman? Ain't I a woman? As black women, we have got, the candidates have got to recognize this dichotomy that we embody. We have the issues of blacks in this country, but we also have the issues of women in this country. We too face a glass ceiling. Sometimes we can't even get in the door to even hit the glass ceiling. We need someone who recognizes us and who sees us. And this criminalization of young black girls is because we are not seen as women. We are seen as objects. And contrary to what is portrayed in the media and what many people think, black women are much more likely to be sexually assaulted than white women. But you don't see that in the media. So these issues affect our health. We deal with a lot of stress. And when we're stressed, that affects our health. When we're ill, we can't work, we can't provide for our families. So we need a candidate who can see us holistically and look at us as a people, understand our past and how our past brought us to the present of where we are now, and who can embrace us for who we are and what we represent.
I would just add that I also, and sort of just even building onto that, you mentioned that we are, you know, the labor, the mules of the world in essence. I think one of the ways in which that plays out today that candidates need to address is this issue of the fact that we work. We work hard. We have the highest labor force participation rate of any women in America. Yet, we are among the lowest-paid women and people, period, women and men in America. Across level of education, we make much lower than anyone else. In fact, if you compare the median earnings of a black woman to that of white men, a black woman has to have a PhD to make on par of what a white man with a GED makes. That makes no sense, okay? It makes no sense. So when we talk about issues of wage inequity, I think it's important, as you mentioned, that we realize that this is not just a gendered issue, this is an intersectional issue. It's a race-gendered issue, okay? Because we faced a double wage gap, one that is tempered by both race and gender. Because we face a double wage gap, one that is tempered by both race and gender. So we really need to figure out ways in which we can make sure that black women are paid fairly for the work that we do. That's number one. Number two, in terms of black women and entrepreneurship, I believe a lot of, you know, we're leading the nation in terms of new business owners. And I believe that one of the reasons why we are is because we're so frustrated with the dynamics that we face in the labor market in terms of all the work that we put in and the little that we give back in terms of financial compensation. But the challenge is oftentimes our businesses are not supported at the level that they need to really grow and flourish. And so what can candidates do? There are some things that they need to do to make sure that our businesses, quite frankly, are properly capitalized, to make sure that we have access to capital, so that we can grow our businesses, so that we can scale our businesses, so they're not only sort of solopreneur endeavors where we're just making a little bit to get by, but we can actually grow and use businesses as a wealth-building vehicle for our communities and for ourselves. These are just a couple of the things that I think that candidates really need to be able to speak to, specifically with regards to black women's economic condition. Because we work, that isn't the issue. The issue is that we're not paid fairly. And so making sure that we get paid is critical for us, for our families, for our communities, and for our future.
So just to piggyback off of what you were saying, Avis, so the pay-income gap, you know, black women make 62 cents to a dollar that white men make. And I think that a lot of issues, there's like the domino effect when black women are not being paid our fair share. So I think that is like the, one of the roots of the issues that black women face. So because we're not getting paid our fair share, we're not getting paid equally, transportation. Did y'all know that public transportation is mostly utilized by black women? And it's because we don't have, we're not getting paid the same, so we don't have money to get our private cars. So we have to rely on a very broken and underfunded system. I used to work in public transportation, and I heard many stories, and mostly they were from black women. And they talk about how they don't have access. So you can, you know, there can be education, there can be hospitals, but if you can't get to it, if you can't get to it, then you're stuck and you're isolated. So that's one of the key issues that stem from us not being paid, you know, equally. Another issue is, of course, health. Stress is the silent killer, just like they say, high blood pressure is the silent killer. Stress is a silent killer. And black women, we remain silent a lot when we're facing like stress from our jobs, when we're facing stress at home, stress, you know, just within our everyday lives. And we do that in order to be able to be secure. We can lose our jobs. We can lose, you know, someone who's helping us pay the bills, you know, if we speak up. So that, doing that, by doing that, we are keeping stress in, and that affects our health. It causes high blood pressure. It causes a lot of health effects in our bodies. And we're not aware of that. A lot of us are not aware of that. Because many times we're just told to just take it, you know? Black women are the mules of the world. I like to say that we're Atlas, and we hold up the world. So, yeah, there's a domino effect of many issues that stem from pay inequality.
So many great points, so many great points. Would you agree with that? Especially on the stress level, right? We do carry it right on our shoulders, but we still have to go out every day and perform. You know, especially with being in the media, I can relate to that especially. You can never have a bad day. I've got to go in and smile for the camera and be, but not knowing, and a lot of you might be watching, not knowing the stress of what's going on in anyone's lives, not just me personally, but anyone who's in a business like that. But great points, great points. And I hope you guys are taking notes, and we can have a further discussion with that when we do our Q and A. Now, this next question, my panelists who are from South Carolina, raise your hand, get your mics ready, because this next question is going to be for you. On Saturday, just a couple of days from today, the South Carolina presidential primary is going to be the first time the black vote will be a significant vote in the nominations process, at least for the Democrats. Now, a special note, the South Carolina Republican Party voted to not have a presidential primary in 2020. And as this is a nonpartisan event, just wanted to make sure that we ask this question about the Democratic Party's presidential nominations process. So with that said, what do black women want for their vote from the presidential candidates to win their vote in the South Carolina primary and Super Tuesday next week? Who wants to tackle that one first? Andrea?
Well, with no people of color still remaining as a candidate for the Democratic nominee, I think it's important that we demand a true in-touch representation of, in the presidential cabinet that emerges. So we need to be among the people, make sure they have, we have a listening ear within the president's, we must have people who have the president's ear, as one thing. The vice president slot is still open. I would like, I would like to see this, that someone that we, someone, I don't want a name, invented and selected as a running mate to represent the concerns of women and people of color. So we need to be careful whoever that person is, they have a female, should be a female, as our VP. And for our attorney general, I mean, I'm not opposed to Stacey Abrams being VP or attorney general, but she needs to be in one of those two positions. As a role to undo some of the damage that is current, and to help resolve some of the damage our current administration has in order to advance our justice agenda.
I'm from South Carolina. Yes, represent. I think we need a candidate who is intentional about investing in our communities, investing in entrepreneurship. Because there is a huge wealth gap between black and white America, and a lot of it has to do with, you know, us just not staying afloat with our businesses and not having the money and the access to capital in order for us to succeed. Also, investing into homeownership and land ownership and ensuring that neighborhoods that were traditionally redlined receive grants in order for them to be on a homeownership or a land ownership program to right the wrongs that happened in the past. So investing in our communities to where we will have generational wealth and not just something that will last, you know, one or two or 10 years. And that's something that we've been lacking since we've been here. You know, I know that my parents, my grandparents, and my great-grandparents, that's something that we've been lacking because frankly, a lot was stolen from us, either by violence or just by us being cheated out of, you know, our land. So basically, a candidate that's willing to right the wrongs for what America has done and to invest in our neighborhoods and to ensure that our education system is equal, making sure that money is going into our education system to where someone on, you know, the other side of the track can still get the same education as someone on the quote-unquote "right" side of the track. So just somebody who's willing to invest in black America and with the intention of, you know, if black America is fixed and everything else from there, everybody benefits from that.
Marvella?
So those are great points. I totally agree. My focus is on health, and so I think it's really important for the candidates to focus on health. You can't court the so-called black vote and ignore health because we lead the nation in poor health outcomes. When you think about a system like social security in this country, everybody who works pays into it. But, you know, African-Americans die a lot earlier than anybody else. So we don't even get the benefits of the social security system that we're paying into, but we are the workers of the society. We built this country. The country was built on our backs, men and women of color. So to ignore health ignores a huge, we're ignoring all the thousands, the millions of people who die prematurely in this country over decades. And we ignore all of the lost days of work, all the lost productivity. Look what we've accomplished in poor health. Imagine what we would do if we were actually healthy, right? So we need to be healthy. We're doing what we can with what we have, but we need a candidate who's going to focus on the social determinants of health, meaning a safe place to live. Being safe, that word has come up a lot. I don't think, I know I don't, I don't think black people feel safe in this country. I don't feel safe. I don't know if anybody feels safe. We built this country and we don't even feel safe in it. So safety comes from having basic needs met, a place to live, a riff over our head, a living wage, not being fearful that if we have a job, it's going to disappear and we're going to be on the street. Because it doesn't take much for any of us to be on the street. How many paychecks? Half a paycheck, one paycheck, two paychecks, and we're on the street. And we're no different from the people who are on the street. We're just a paycheck or two away. So there are so many of us living close to the edge. We're living, our margins are small in terms of these basic needs. And we need a candidate who understands that. And what the strength of that approach is that we can do what Dr. King was doing with the Poor People's Movement. Because he started to unite people across racial, social, gender lines. Because these issues don't apply to just one group, they apply to a lot of people. African-Americans make up 12% of the US population. It is mathematically impossible that all of the black people in America are poor. It doesn't even work mathematically. I know Reverend Daniels, you deal with numbers. We are only 12%. But when you look at the media, all the poor people are portrayed as people of color. That's not even possible. So maybe we are disproportionately represented in the poor people, but most of the poor people in this country are white. Most of the people in this country are white. Hard math, you know? We can do that, we can do that. So really, you know, addressing these issues of health, keeping us healthy so we can maintain our work status, keep working, too many of us are taking disability. Black people are more likely to go on disability than to actually retire. So we may talk to a lot of people and they say, yeah, I'm retired. But they're not really retired. They are on disability. That means they're not getting their full pensions, they're not, they're not getting really what they've worked for. So health, we can make a more productive society, we can contribute, we can make everything better. And that's the way to truly make America what it needs to be, is to have a healthy workforce. When you look at countries, the happiest country on earth is a place like the Netherlands. I forget if it's the Netherlands or Finland. They did, Finland, they did a documentary on it. They showed a rubbish collector, a garbage collector, lived next door to a physician. Their houses were equally beautiful. And the rubbish collector said, yes, I collect rubbish. The physician said, I treat patients. There was very little difference in their salaries. They don't have to worry about losing a job. They're secure. They have security, that basic security. We've heard of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We have, if we don't, we have a huge population in this country where the basic needs are not being met. And that creates a very unstable society. And as an American, that concerns me because that's when revolutions happen, right? So we have a chance to try to bring back some semblance of a middle class by giving people jobs, giving people work, not sending our work overseas and keeping us healthy, paying attention to our health needs so that we can stay productive.
All right. Thank you, Marvella.
I agree with all of that. And, you know, so I'm very transparent. I'm a transplant, right? So I've been here for two years. This will be my, well, back and forth for four. But this will be my first election here. But like, and I should say, and with everything was said, I think one of the things that keeps pulling at me is that I want somebody that sees me as human. Because when you see me as black, you keep putting your prejudice in there, right? But if you could see me as human and understand that we all want our basic needs met, we deserve to have our basic needs. You know, as you said, housing, transportation, equal pay, all those things are like rights that we all have, right? And should have. But I do believe, like, see me as human, because when you start seeing me as black, you haven't learned how to see me as black yet. I should say that. You haven't learned how to see me as black. So see me as human, and then we can go into talking about what I need from you now and after. Because what I don't want to keep seeing is you pan, you know, it's like the panhandle is on the train, it's time to vote, so you panhandling for my vote? Mm-mm, that don't work for me. So have it, and this is at all the levels, because I'm not just thinking about the presidential election. It's going to be a lot of names on that ballot. And that, like, for everything down to the school board elections, how are you seeing me? Because then how are you seeing my children? Because if you don't even see me as an adult, as human and worth anything, already know how you interact with my young people. And so I want you to see us as human and understand first and foremost that we want what everybody else, this is not so like, this is not rocket science. We want what everybody else wants.
All right. Thank you, Vivian. We've reached our last question for our first group of panelists. It's going to be followed by a Q and A, so if you've got those ready, we'll get through those really quickly as well. And panelists, I'll ask if you would keep your responses down to about a minute, minute and a half for this final question. How do black women that are here tonight and those who are tuning in online leverage the power of their leadership and the power of their vote in 2020 and beyond? Avis, let's start with you.
I think it's really about making sure that we do what we know how to do. The bottom line is that we are the engine of the black voting power in this nation. And it's because historically, we know not only is it important that we go out to vote, we make sure that all of those that surround us do it as well. What's really important this year is that we take that to the max. As you mentioned, Stacey Abrams a minute ago was very, you know, Stacey was cheated. Everybody knows she was cheated. But the reality is, there was also almost a million eligible black people in Georgia that could have voted in that election but didn't vote in that election. It shouldn't have been that close. It should not have been that close, okay? And so what I am very concerned about is that we take the challenge this time to not just show up at the voting polls in the same way that we typically do. I think it's very important that we maximize our vote. We don't have one vote to spare. So really just doing everything that we can do to make sure that everybody that's eligible to be registered is registered. Everybody that is registered shows up. We need to make sure that we show up at historic levels in 2020, and we have the power to do that.
Show up and show out, like we always have been doing. I think that we, black women show up to vote in record numbers because it's the most private thing we can do to raise our voice without losing, you know, our jobs or losing what have you in order to meet our basic needs. So I think that's why we show up at the polls. But like Avis was saying, we need to maximize that. Oprah said, I come as one, but I stand as 10,000. And I think if we have that mindset, if we're like, okay, I'm going to bring a sister with me, if everybody's there, I'm going to make sure when I go to the polls that there's, you know, somebody at my job or somebody at my church, make sure that they're registered. And, you know, I think sometimes we think that we have And, you know, I think sometimes we think that we have to hold the registration drive and get 500 people registered, just one person. And I think that if everybody came together and had a, made a pact and said, "Hey, you get three people, you get three people, you get three people, we will have like 10,000 before you know it." And then, uh, we will all go to the polls together. And, uh, like my sister, um, over here, uh...
Marvella.
Marva, when she said, I'm sorry.
Marbella.
Marbella. Um, when she said, "Ain't I a woman?" Um, I've been reciting that speech since I was 15, so she, she made it come out of me. And at the end of the speech, um, so Jona said, "If one woman alone can turn this world upside down, we women together ought to be able to turn it right side up again." So I think that's what we're doing right here today and that we'll keep doing be, in 2020 and beyond.
And if I'm not mistaken, I know at least, uh, in Charleston County, if you go to the voter registrations office, they will give you the forms that you can take with you, as many as you'd like, and you can get folks registered, uh, that way as well. So that's also something to keep in mind too. And I believe the deadline for the November election is October 4th. So that's the deadline for that. Andrea?
Okay. In 2020, vote blue in November. But for the primary, um, I think we need, leading up to the primary, so vote for the candidate, the best candidate and come who is also willing to advance our things. None of them are perfect, but look for the best person possible. Who have your issues, who answer our issues, but we also have to hold whomever very accountable. We just can't elect them. We have to, the forms are important when they're trying to get our vote. Forms should be just as important once they're elected. And we hold them accountable. We're the only ones who can hold them to what they say they would do. And, and we need to look at people's track record, who won our votes. And we need to think about that as the few candidates we have left to vote on, on Saturday. That's all I'm going to say.
Um, I think one of the things for me is that, um, like, I think Tiffany may have said it earlier or down here was said around, first, knowing that this is where the power lies. We have the power. And what always comes up for me is, and when I'm talking to parents or community, is that you register me and then you leave me. So I think there's some work that we get to do to keep being with folks. So when we say 2020 and beyond, it's not that, okay, we got you to vote. There's still work to do. There's still work. And then after we vote, after we get them to vote, show them and continue to work with them how to hold folks accountable. Because I think that's a lot of the missing pieces. Because I keep hearing over and over again, "My vote don't matter." They're saying, "I don't understand, like, tell me how," because I was that person, "tell me how my vote matters. Tell me how it's going to look different." So I think one of the things that we can do on these platforms is really let people know, "We wish you from 2020 and beyond and mean it." Right? Everything we say and we want our candidates to be, let's be that for our communities.
I would also like to say one more thing. Not only do we get them out to vote, but we also need to help them get to the poll. That's key. And we, in our communities and as women of organization and coalition, I truly believe that we need to be strategizing in how we're going to get people to the polls to vote. And I know one of our sections in Greenville County, that's what they're doing on Saturday. They're taking people in certain communities and have rented vans and so forth to get them to the polls. And we all need to be doing that, especially when it comes in November.
And finally, Marbella?
Yes, I would, I mean, I think, I agree with everything that's been said. And what I've seen is that I think everybody in this room is empowered, but I think we have a lot of work to do to empower other people who, I, to echo, who think their vote doesn't count. There's a woman in my church who lost her place to live, she's living in her car, and she says she doesn't vote. So I'm trying to help her see the connection between voting and some of the things that are happening in her lives. And I think that's where, we have a lot of work to do to try to build people up, because they've been broken down for so long that they don't feel like they count. So we have to put into them and help them to become empowered and to know that they're important and know that they have value.
Okay, Marbella, thank you so much. Do believe we really, we want to, in the essence of, like that play on word, in the essence of, uh, keeping things, uh, moving a little quickly. We won't have time for any Q and A during this time, but please, let's give our panelists another round of applause. Vivian Anderson, Andrea Casey, Marbella Ford, Dr. Avis Jones DeWeaver, and Tiffany James. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I'd like to call Melanie back on stage now so we can get ready for... Whoa, was that the alarm?
All right, can we give our sister, we have a, we coined this phrase, said, "We are sisters." So we, can we give our sisters, who are our first panel, a round of applause? And our wonderful moderator. So y'all ready? Y'all ready? Y'all ready for the second panel? Are we ready? Are we ready? Are we ready? So it is my pleasure to introduce our next panel moderator, who is also our co-host, and that is our sister, Tanya, Tanya, I keep messing up, so sorry, sis, I keep saying it. Tanya Christian. She's the News and Politics Editor for Essence Magazine. Tanya, come on up, girl.
Thank you, Melanie. And thank you guys for having me here in Charleston. As Melanie said, my name is Tanya Christian. I'm a News and Politics Editor at Essence Magazine. And I'm excited to be here. Actually, uh, the first time I came to Charleston was about a year ago to follow Senator Booker around in this state. And I had an amazing time. And since, I've been able to come back three additional times. So thank you for always having me and being so welcoming. Um, as you know, Essence has been around for a very long time, and we are celebrating our 50th year, and we're excited to be in this space. You know, we've really ramped up our political coverage, and it's exciting to be a black media outlet who's really getting the interviews from the candidates. Because I think they understand that black women do hold the power. And not only do we go to the polls and vote for them, but we also bring other people along with us. And so it's important for them to have our ear. And for Essence, it's important for us to share what they're saying with you guys. So thanks again for being a support. And, um, you know, festival's coming up in July, so I hope to see you guys all there. Tonight, I will be moderating our second panel. The panelists, I'm going to put this down. The panelists are the Honorable Gilda Cobb Hunter. She is the South Carolina State Representative and President... Our panel is asked, our panel is asked to go a little further in the discussion about the issues black women are concerned about. Not just for the presidential election, but for down-ballot races like congressional elections, state and local elections. Also, last week, the National Coalition and Black Women's Roundtable launched its Unity 2020 Black Vote and Be Counted campaign in partnership with APRI, NAN, and UL, Black Voters Matter, and 40 other black leaders and organizations. That included releasing their BWR Nonpartisan Voter Guide. That includes the responses to their presidential questionnaire they developed in partnership with APRI, Black Voters Matter, and National Council of Negro Women. I just want to let you know that everyone can see those answers at bwrvoterguide2020.info. So please check that out. So we're going to hop into our panel, and I'm going to ask them, um, the panelists, if you could just keep your responses to about a minute or two. Ladies, the presidential candidates responded to 98 questions focused on eight-issue platforms, including economic justice, equity and access, quality education, equity and access, quality healthcare, health and reproductive justice, women's rights, LGBTQ rights, human rights and gender justice, criminal justice reform and systemic racism, climate change and environmental justice, inclusive democracy, civil rights and systemic racism, and protecting our democracy and our privacy. Needless to say, the questionnaire is very thorough. Due to time constraints, we will focus on two or three of these platforms. And for our first question, let's start with the economic justice, equity, and opportunities issues. Question one. Gilda, Carol, and Michelle, in your work, what are the economic justice issues and opportunity issues that most impact black women, families, and black communities overall? And how are you elevating these issues in the 2020 elections on a local, state, or national level?
So, as was brought out in the previous panel, housing, and the high cost of housing is a pressing economic justice and opportunity issue. Earlier, we talked about access to capital and funding for homeownership, but I think part of the challenge is, is that we hear candidates talk about these issues, and it's a very, very much a soundbite, and it does not go deep. And we don't talk about the structural inequities that are built into the system. And so we've created a housing policy in this country that prioritizes homeownership over rent, renting. And in our community, where we have a majority of renters, we're not able to have access to wealth creation tools the same way as someone who owns a house. Or, and when you think about access to capital, it's not enough for, um, there to be investment in our community if we don't control that investment in our community. And so there has to be a relinquishment of control in terms of capital and how it flows into our community. And so if we don't have black women lending to black women, and we have black women having to meet the standards of someone who, who cannot see our growth potential, who does not understand our markets and our customers, then when we walk into a bank and we say we need a million dollars to do X, Y, or Z, they can't see what we see because they don't know our customers like we do.
How's everybody? Good? All right. I really want to appreciate the fact that in the last panel, um, we talked to some extent about equal pay, because that's a really important issue, particularly for black women who earn, depending upon what organization you ask, 62 to 63% on the white male non-Hispanic dollar. And so it's really important for us to think about equal pay also in a broader context, because it's not just the dollars you earn on the job, it's your wealth, the wealth that you have historically. Um, it has everything to do with housing, how much money you can keep in your pocket. I feel like we've checked that box. Um, what I, what I also though think are two really important points related to black women and economic power. We heard early on in this program, when Yvette Flowers got up and reminded us that we were in the House of Labor. And that, um, because black women have increased their participation as longshore people, um, they are able to put food on the table, to buy homes, to rent at a higher degree, and do whatever they want economically. And we can't forget the power of labor. And that, and historically in the United States, the only time the wage gap began to narrow was when labor was at its height, when one in three people carried a union card. Those days have been over. Ronald Reagan ended that for us, and it's been downhill ever since. So, union jobs are really important for leveling the playing field and making sure that people have representation, and not just financial representation, but power on the job and the ability to actually move elections in the directions that improve our economy for our communities, but also for our entire family. So there's that. The other thing is that how many people today saw something on the news about the coronavirus? Raise your hand. So this is happening in a moment when 40% of the people in the United States do not have a single paid sick day. Right? So the CDC says, "Stay home so that you don't spread the disease, but if you stay home, you're likely not to get paid." And among low-wage earners and among people of color, almost 80% lack a single-paid sick day. We're talking bus drivers, we're talking people who care for our children, childcare workers, we're talking about restaurant workers, servers serving our food. All of these folks are struggling to have a single-paid sick day. So there's that paid sick day that allows you to take one or two days off to go get tested for coronavirus, right? There's also that longer term where you're supposed to self-quarantine, so two, maybe three weeks. We also don't have paid family and medical leave, right? And that's the leave that you need for a longer period of time to recover from something like that, to welcome a baby for a couple of months, to care for a sick family member, to care for yourself, recovering from surgery. We're here today with BWR, but we're also here with the, um, thinking about paid family and medical leave. And we've started a campaign called Paid Leave For All that creates equity, economic equity across everyone in the country, because it's not fair that you're not allowed to stay home and care for yourself or your loved ones with pay. Join us in our campaign. There's a sign-up sheet outside. I hate to do a commercial in the middle of my speech. However, I do want to say that this is a really important campaign, and you know it's important because it was raised in the State of the Union when our president took credit for doing paid family leave. He took credit for that. And they've been fighting us tooth and nail on this issue for years. Many Republicans have these weird paid leave kind of bills out because they know they have to check the women's box and they have to cover this issue. Paid Leave For All supports the Family Act, which is comprehensive, 12 weeks, job-protected, all the things that we need in a real paid leave system. Join us in that fight. Thank you.
That was our third person in this group? Yes, so Michelle, Carol, and Gilda. I think we're up to the next one. Joteka. We know that entrepreneurship, wealth building, or economic security is important to black women. What are you seeing in the field? How can black women compete in this global economy that is heavily impacted by technology and social innovation?
Well, good evening. Good evening. So I'm from South Carolina, so it's so good to be home. I would be remiss if I did not say hello to all of my cousins that are in Johnsonville, South Carolina, in Pamlico, in Florence County, watching online. I told them I would shout them out, so. Hey, y'all. But, but thank you. By show of hand... By show of hands, how many of you have a social media account, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram? Raise your hand. How many of you have an Echo, or Amazon, or Lexa, whatever, in your homes? How many of you have a cellphone? How many of you have used Uber, or Lyft, or Rideshare? How many of you have used some kind of service to have food delivered to your home? I could go on and on and on, asking questions about how much we are utilizing technology. Now, I’m going to ask this question. How many of you know someone that is working in the tech industry? Okay. How many of you know someone who owns a tech company that has been funded? See, the issue is that there is a real imbalance in terms of the hands that went up when I asked questions about how we’re using technology and how we are benefiting from technology. And what we have seen over the past 20 years in this country, there has been a real growth in the technology sector. But what has also happened is that people of color, particularly black women, have not had our rightful place at the table. Now, in the industry, in terms of your question, Tanya, you asked, “What are we seeing?” What we know is that we, as black women, are the most educated demographic of any demographic in this country. We know that we have the fastest-growing demographic of entrepreneurs. We know that black women’s role as founders, founders of businesses, have grown by 265% and that we account for ownership of 1.5 million businesses generating $44 billion in revenue. So it’s not a question of whether or not we have the talent, it’s not the question of whether or not we have the hustle and the ability, but the reality is that with all of that, still, the reality is that black women only comprise of 2% of the workforce in Silicon Valley, and we are on the receiving end of .01% of venture dollars. And I think that it’s important for us to continue to raise that fact, and I think it’s also important, as a black woman that’s in Silicon Valley, and I must stay true to my roots, I started in civil rights, I’m always an activist. I see myself as an activist on assignment in Silicon Valley. But we have numbers there, and there are black women in Silicon Valley, but it’s still far too little. And the reality is that we have to keep uplifting those women that are there. And I’m proud every time I see a spread of the black women that have been able to raise more than $1 million, but I’m equally sad that they can all fit on a two-page spread. They should be in every single page in Essence Magazine and not just on two pages. So, when it comes to thinking about entrepreneurship, there’s a lot that we have to do in this country, and I think it’s important to challenge candidates, not to just tell us that they want to help open the door to businesses, but how are they going to help black women? How are they going to close the systemic racism and the systems that have been in place that have kept us far behind, that allow us to take our rightful place and to propel in accordance with what we already know in terms of our aptitude and ability to not only find businesses, grow businesses, but also to propel these businesses?
Thank you. Now, we’re going to get into the elections. On Saturday, South Carolina will hold its presidential primary, and the first Super Tuesday will take place in southern states and delegate-rich states like Alabama, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Massachusetts, North Carolina, and Virginia. We know through our B W R Essence poll that black women are concerned about racial, gender, and social justice issues. They are concerned about protecting our civil rights and voting rights, being counted fairly in the 2020 census, immigration, reparations, protecting our democracy, and so much more. So this question is for Joy, Tanya, and Latasha. We know that black women have been leading this fight, and how do we work to address these issues and more? Share with us what you and other black women leaders nationally and in the states are doing to elevate these issues and other critical racial justice issues.
Let’s all go first. I think the panel before, and also this panel, we’ve talked about a lot of critical issues such as pay equity, minimum wage, pregnancy accommodations, childcare, and family leave. They’re all so important to creating economic stability for women and for black women in the workplace. And what we see in the country now, we often joke about it in Mississippi, is in the past presidential election, when our current president won, we said, “Well, welcome to Mississippi,” because that’s how it’s been for quite some time in Mississippi. How do you define a win, and how do you build a strategy when the cards are stacked against you? And so, what we’ve done is, we built a very robust program. We call it the Mississippi Women’s Economic Security Initiative, and we have partners that we’ve connected with on the ground, such as the Mississippi Black Women’s Roundtable. We have people from Louisiana here in the audience. Please wave, stand up if you want to, part of our Louisiana Coalition, and then also the N double A C P and One Voice. And what we’ve done is, we’re also trying to galvanize black women, go into the communities, talk about issues, educate and inform about issues, because what we’ve seen sometimes in some rural areas such as the Delta, a lot of people don’t know that they should have rights with certain issues. So it’s like you have to take a step back sometimes, and I’m going to share a personal story, because I think it’s really relevant here. My first year of law school, which was 10 years ago, I got pregnant, and I had a child my first year of law school, and I had a C-section, and like three days after law school, I resumed law school work. And I shared this story in a room with all black women, and everyone stood up and clapped. And they said, “Oh, that’s, you’re superwoman. That’s like amazing that you went back to school.” And a few months later, I was at a symposium where I was the only black woman, it was all white women, and I shared the exact same story, and the response was, “Oh, you went back to school after having a C-section? Why didn’t you take off?” And it was like, huh. But this is the narrative, and this is the things that we say, and we teach black women, you have to push through. So now, what we’re doing, we’re taking a step back and saying, “Don’t clap, that’s not okay, that’s not how this should have been. You should have had some type of accommodation, you should have had some type of, you know, resources available to you.” But when you’re young, at that time, I think I was 21, 22, I didn’t know. So that’s a big part of what we’re doing on the ground in Mississippi and Louisiana, is we’re taking a step back, we’re educating our community, not only about the issues, but so they can become self-advocates, and also hopefully to put them in positions where when we don’t have the vote, we can train people to be leaders and create a leadership infrastructure where it’s representative of the people who are impacted by the work. Nothing about us without us, I say that all the time. And sometimes when you go in these rooms and you’re the only person, it’s oftentimes hard, because people can’t relate or understand. So now, what we’re trying to do is take a step back, have these conversations with people in Mississippi and Louisiana, and use it as an opportunity to learn, to learn from each other, to share experiences, to provide a space for healing, and also to build leadership, where we can put people in positions of power where we’re not in the minority, and we do have people where we can have the votes to be successful. And that’s a long-term strategy also, so I want to take a step back if I have a little bit more time. So how you define a win in Mississippi, in Louisiana, in the South, is totally different than when you’re in a more progressive state. So also, one of the things we’ve had to do is to be very creative and work locally with some more progressive-minded people in office, some of the municipalities, and educate them. And while that is largely somewhat symbolic, because we do have preemption at the state level in Mississippi, what it does is it sends a loud message. If we’re able to get 50 women, 100 women to get on board this initiative, and get our local mayors to pass issues such as pay equity, or to raise their wages, or to talk about these issues, what it does is, it’s symbolic, and it creates a power, powerful moment, and it builds out a movement. So as we move towards the State House to try to push these issues, we can say, “Well, we’ve got 50 cities on board that talk about why this is so important, so you should too, right?” And so that’s one of the things that we’re doing in Mississippi and in Louisiana. And then also, like I said, we want to galvanize black women and create a leadership pipeline, because we recognize that’s the way to create systemic change, is by putting people in positions of power where they have the authority and autonomy to pass policies, and also to create policies that are equitable and fair for black women.
Okay. Hello. Good evening, everyone. We’re going to try it again. Hello and good evening, everyone. So I’m Tanya, and I’m here from the Black Women’s Roundtable, and I’m about to tell you what we’re doing at the Black Women’s Roundtable in different states. So I would like to also say that we’re doing Do Two in 2020, Get Out to Vote and Be Counted, and we’re here with over 40 of our national partners, which three are here today, which is A P R I, Clayola Brown, we have N C N W here tonight, and also N A N. We also have our media partners here, Roland Martin, Unfilter, and Essence. So, the Black Women’s Roundtable, we’re having our Women of Power National Summit that will be held in Washington, D.C. on March the 4th through the 8th, and there we will have our Power Table. We will be on Capitol Hill, where we will strategize about what we want from the presidential candidates and protecting our voting rights. And also, we have our state affiliates and network partners, they’re out getting, out to vote, and these states, I’ll give me a minute, I have to pull this up on my phone, sorry. And those are Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Michigan, Mississippi, North Carolina, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Virginia, and the DMV area, which is D.C., Maryland, and Virginia. And we are doing much more leveraging our votes out here. So those are some of the things that we’re doing right now.
And for the next question, we have a call-in from Representative Cobb Hunter. And the question is, “With South Carolina being a coastal state, and sea levels are rising, and the hurricanes have impacted key industries, how can our vote be used to further the path to environmental justice in South Carolina and nationally?
Let me say, you there at ILA Global News Call, regards to the House of Labor and all the guests there, sorry I couldn’t be there in person, but the most important thing that can be done is as you choose your candidate, if environmental justice is a priority, look at the candidate’s records, do the research, the receipts, as they now say, because this issue impacts not just people here in America, but globally around the country. And we have to recognize that to change things as far as the environment because of the regulatory piece of it, we need to be engaged politically. And that means we’ve got to make sure we hold candidates’ feet to the fire. So when they talk about environmental justice, we have specifics, and there are candidates, at least two, in the current field, of which that can be, the point can be made. That’s what I would suggest, because, again, people are saying climate change. The other part that I think is important is people are calling at climate change, and for a lot of people of color, that throws them off, and they can’t see the connection. But when we talk about climate change, and we talk about environmental justice, it’s important that we recognize that both, one and the same. You have the doctor there, and so she can make the connections about the public health connections to living in areas that are polluted. I hear the hook, even though I’m not there, I hear it and see it. Thank you.
Okay. And for our last question, I’d like each of you to respond. How do black women that are here tonight and tuning in online leverage the power of their leadership and the power of their vote in 2020 and beyond?
Okay. Yeah, we’re starting. Okay, well, we’re going to start with me. So, how we leverage our vote in 2020 with our leadership and beyond, I think we need to get out with a trusted message, and first off, with the folks that can trust us, and that’s the family, friends, your church members, and your communities. We also have to get the messages out, not to the people that’s here and on these platforms, but we need to go into hair salon, barber shops with trusted messengers. We need to reach our sisters and brothers in the clubs, all clubs, to get those messages out, and also build these relationships, not during just the election year, but before election year, so they can trust us, and they want to get out to vote, and give them the rise and information they will need. So I think that’s how we can leverage our relationships and leadership.
So I think there’s two important things. One, the first is, and I think this panel is representative of that, is that we cannot be afraid to use our voices, and we cannot be so desperate for change that we’re accepting of anything. And so, we have to continue to stay at the table and to continue to ask the hard questions of the candidates. I also think it’s very important that we recognize the power of young people this election cycle, and I think that we have to educate our children, both our sons and daughters, in that they cannot be one-issue voters. And so I think it’s very critical that we help them understand the power of their vote, and to the point that was made earlier, that they have to understand this is not just about their next four years in college, but this is about the next 40 years of their lives. And so, it’s not just about the things that they need today, but it’s the things that their children will need 20 or 30 years from now. I think it’s very important that we continue to emphasize the importance of voting rights, and that we recognize the disenfranchisement of so many African-Americans in communities, particularly in the South, and that we work very diligently to make sure that in rural places in our country, that some of the old-school tactics that keep us from the polls are no longer in place. And so, that’s going to be a concerted effort, and I think that those of us who live in the urban areas have to be just as committed to the people who live in the rural areas.
So, I think there are some things that we have to pay really close attention to, and I don’t think that’s so hard for black women, because we pay close attention in political moments. In 2016, we voted for the candidate in record numbers who looked like they respected democracy. I won’t call any names, but we voted in record numbers for the candidate who stood for democracy, and for the rule of law, and for the health and well-being of women particularly, and people in this country. We did that, more than any other group. So I know that we have a, we can be critical, and we can be analytical, no matter where we live, where we were educated, you know, you talk to any black woman in the store, in a hospital, in a university, selling you shoes, and they can almost complete your sentence about, you know, what the moment means for us right now. So I’m not that worried about that. I’m worried about whether or not that same brilliant black woman is going to get up and get out into their streets and bring everyone they know with them, and get on the phone and ask people, “Why aren’t you voting today? Are you ready to vote? Do just what you do if you’re canvassing, you ask people, “Do you have a plan on Election Day? I know you’re working, sister. Is there somebody who can, you know, can you get this afternoon off? Or if it’s Saturday, can we take care of your kids? Do you need help to get to the polls?” That’s the question we have to ask people. We have to leave no stone unturned, we have to bring everyone with us, and we have to make sure that everyone we know is doing the same. All of my life, almost every election, we’ve said, someone has said to me, “This is the most important election of your life.” It never fails. I don’t know when it’s ever been truer. And so, I think what we have to do, and I know it’s been said over and over again, we have to double down and vote like we have never voted before.
Thank you. So I want to leave you with two things. Number one, there’s a song that I absolutely love, Sweet Honey in the Rock, says, “We who believe in freedom cannot rest.” Now, I do believe that you should take a break, but we cannot rest. We cannot rest. We are all queens. I love it when I’m at Essence Festival, when I’m somewhere, I see another black woman, “Hey, queen, hey, queen, you text a friend, hey, queen.” We all wear our crowns, but what’s important... We all wear our crowns, but what's important is, I think we have to think about, how are we constantly kingdom-minded in the work that we do, how we show up? Because I ask, what good is a queen that sits on a throne if the people in the kingdom are languishing? So we have to constantly be kingdom-minded, and constantly continue to work, because there is just so much at stake. To my second point, I just wanna just really just reiterate and highlight and just double pound whatever it is to my sister who just talked about the attack on voting rights. There is an attack on democracy in our country. There has always been an attack on the Black vote since the ability for Black and free enslaved Africans in this country to vote, there has always been an attack. But we have seen one of the most aggressive attacks on voting rights in modern-day history, and it started way back, you know, in 2011, where we saw more than 200 pieces of legislation move across the country, photo ID, attacks on third-party voter registration, attacks on same-day voter registration. All of that happened. And we are now feeling and seeing the effects of that. Someone mentioned Stacey Abrams on the previous panel. Stacey Abrams is not the governor of Georgia because of voter suppression in Georgia. That's very real. We cannot lose sight of that. And so what we're seeing now, we're seeing polling places being moved, we're seeing all of these attacks on voting rights, and you gotta recognize that if someone is willing to spend millions upon millions upward to billions of dollars to keep you from voting, that there is something powerful about your vote. Now, I told y'all, my cousins are watching from South Carolina, I grew up on a dirt road in Johnsonville, South Carolina, and I went to a little small church. I want you to look at your sister next to you, I want you to say, "Sister." Come on, we could do better, say, "Sister." What's happening? What's happening is an attempt to shift power. 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 The attack on voting rights is an attempt to shift power. It's all about power. It's about who controls the power. It's about what that power yields. We can never lose sight of that. And the most important thing for us is to leverage that power and to hold those accountable who we vote for. Because long will be gone, the days in which anybody will expect for Black women to carry any election on our shoulders. And when it gets downtime for the policies that we advocate for, that you just wanna give us a slice of the pie, knowing that we cooked the whole darn meal, that we created the recipe and built the kitchen. I don't know how to follow up behind it. What I will say is, one of the biggest challenges that I believe that as Black women that we face is, we're so strapped. You know, we don't have the space and opportunity to recognize our power as a collective, collective. We're running households, trying to find childcare, we're trying to shatter ceilings in the workplace, and this is just not a space that's often given to us. And while our daily routines look much different than our mothers and our grandmothers, we remain the cornerstone of our community. And sometimes it's challenging to leverage power of leadership and the power of a vote because of these barriers that exist, but we're doing it. And I cannot overstate the importance of building effective Black women-led coalitions like the ones we have on the Gulf Coast, like the ones that Melanie's leading, like the ones here in South Carolina. There's power in numbers, and increasing and holding our leaders accountable to a collective agenda that speaks not only to the needs of Black women, but speaks to the needs of our community as well. And our, our voice is unique, it's powerful, but it's underutilized and it's underrepresented, right? And, and we have everything we need to create a paradigm shift by coming together, but it's in spaces like this and opportunities like this, they are far and few. And we need that, we need those spaces so we can show candidates, and they can recognize the power of our vote, and not just our vote, the power that we represent within ourselves. And that's what we need to do. This is not a moment, this is a movement.
So ladies, thank you so much for offering your voice to these important discussions. Now, we're going to open up the floor for question and answer. I believe there's a mic on this side and on this side.
Good evening. Oh, I love y'all. Y'all are so wonderful, so powerful. This room is just so powerful. And so, there's been a lot of sort of focus on our ability to get people out to vote, but almost zero focus on the votes that are stolen. So can we speak to any strategy around election protection?
So, I am one, I believe approximately 2,000 students who've been trained by the ACLU of South Carolina to do election protection on Saturday out at the polls, and I think that that's a strategy that ACLU is doing all over the country. And so, we've been trained and prepared, we will be at the polls from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturday to ensure that every vote is counted and that no votes are stolen.
National Vote Protection Association. Yes, I'll, I'll get that number for you.
It's a co-host privilege. And then, thank you, but also, we're partners with Election Protection Coalition, so their number is 1-866-OUR-VOTE, O-U-R-V-O-T-E, 1-866-OUR-VOTE. And that number's been going since 2000 Florida debacle, for those who remember that. That's my home state. It's just wonderful things happen, I was born there, bad things happen, you know, 2000 and many other things. And Angela Gillum, I think that happened to him too, so, for real.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see all of our sisters here today. And it's more not a question, but a promise that I would like to ask. We need to end separatism. Black women needs to remember, when they are forming this upward mobility, that we also are uplifting the Black gay women and the Black communities. Please take us with you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Dr. Beverly Wilson. I'm also a last semester student at the Charleston School of Law. Very proud of my sister, Mrs. Michelle Map, she's also a student there. And thank you for this opportunity, first of all, to bring us all together. I think my mic is dead, but, I can hear you. Okay, but in any event, to have the opportunity to hear from many individuals in our community and from beyond, to speak about the things that are absolutely important for us to know as people of color. Your vote matters. Who you place in office, they cast decisions that affect all of us, and not just today, but as you stated, for 40 years. That means things will be going on that will not just affect us, but our posterity. When that is the case, we have to be very careful. Pay attention to smoke screens. Smoke screens confuse, they change issues because you can't see through them clearly. But most times, we've always known as the praying people, to ask for clarity, to ask for discernment, the ability to hear and understand. When you don't understand something, ask questions. People have to answer you. They are taking your votes, making decisions on your behalf, affecting us and our communities. I'm a physician first, as far as advocacy, and I'm a Christian first, as far as how I lead my life. When it comes to healthcare, that's the one thing that all of us have to have access to. President Obama did a wonderful job bringing into place affordable healthcare. Our president, president has done everything he could to snatch it up by the roots and has not been successful. So when you don't get up, go out and vote. You allow that effort to go unchecked. We have to protect the things that we have been given, the things we have worked for, that our forefathers and foremothers worked for. When it comes to people who are in power, I thank God every day that I am a physician. Even though this is my last semester at the Charleston School of Law, I've not received one penny for this semester. "Oh, you reached 90 hours. We can't fund you." That's the biggest baloney I've ever heard. And I sit and I smile, because I know every day that I want to be here, God's gonna make sure that I am here. And when I talk to a president who says, "Ooh, I think I can make a directive and take care of that right away," that was three weeks ago. Where is your directive? I'm very forward in my speaking, I'm not muddled, and I do understand politics. And I told him to his face, I said, "Sir, that's political, because of stances that I take." I'm not a quiet person when it comes to what my rights are and my people's rights. I've fought for 30-plus years, and I'm not done yet. But I need all of you to make a commitment, to do whatever it is that you can to make a difference in your communities. Take somebody to the polls with you. I've been watching polls for eight, since I've been eight or nine years of age. I'm 55. I'm not tired yet. There's a lot to be done, and we have to take control of our right to vote, put people in office who care about us, who look like us, who would do the things to make our community strong. Don't sell your vote for a box of chicken. That's what was the going item when I was nine years of age, going with my father as we monitored polls. And here I am again, I'm gonna be monitoring the polls on Saturday. Why? Because it's important for us to be heard, for our rights to be upheld, and for people to know that we do care. God bless you.
Any other questions?
Hello, my name is Gus Ololary, and in the House of Labor, a friend of Labor. It's a wonderful thing to see the gathering here this evening, especially to commemorate and to invigorate the power of the Black woman, and how, and the significance. We brothers, we need help. You know, we need help, and that is, the Black woman is the base of the Democratic Party. I would like to know what, by asking you and saying, you know, what can be done to invigorate brothers to go out and vote as well, to have the kind of presence that Black women have? How can we foster that?
Well, thank you for being here. I, I'm gonna just jump out there. Trust Black women, uh, number one. Trust Black women. But you raise a good point. Black women, I would dare say, Black women are the, are the backbone of this country. We're the backbone of all of our communities. And when Black women, statistically, when Black women go to the polls, so do our families, so do those that are around us. And so, I think that there are opportunities for, there are Black men that are leading their Black male organizations that are doing amazing work to, to galvanize Black men, their, their movements, where there's voter mobilization happening in barber shops all across the country. So, I don't want to discount the amazing work that is already happening amongst Black men, but I do think that there are opportunities for Black men to increase their voter turnout in, in elections to match it to where Black women are. And I think the way that we do that is, A, trusting Black women, being able to follow Black women's lead, because the reality is, having worked in the civil rights movement, and I, I'm sure my, my, my sisters, Mel Campbell and Clayola Brown, and, and all of you women that are, that work in the movement could say, there have been times where Black women were doing all the work, and when it come time, they get pushed out of the way, and, and our brothers move us out of the way, take credit for all of the work. And I think that, that that has to stop, that our brothers have to acknowledge the work of Black women, and also be able to let Black women lead. But I think that the power in this country is when we're ever able to follow each other's lead, because that's where the true power of the Black community will, will, will actually prosper and grow.
All right. So, ladies, thank you so much. And I'm gonna ask at this time for our co-hosts, Melanie Clayola and Trudy, to come back to
She's just a girl and she's on fire. Hotter than a fantasy, lonely like a highway. She's living in a world and it's on fire. Filled with catastrophe, but she knows she can fly away. Oh, she got both feet on the ground and she's burning it down. Oh, she got her head in the clouds and she's not backing down. This girl is on fire. This girl is on fire. She's walking on fire. This girl is on fire. Looks like a girl, but she's a flame. So bright, she can burn your eyes, better look the other way. You can try, but you'll never forget what they. She's on top of the world. Hardest of the hottest girls say, oh. We got our feet on the ground and we're burning it down. Oh, got our head in the clouds and we're not calming down. This girl is on fire. This girl is on fire. She's walking on fire. This girl is on fire. Everybody stares as she goes by, and they can see the flame that's in her eyes. Watch her as she's lighting up tonight. Nobody knows that she's a lonely girl, and it's a lonely world, but she gonna let it burn, baby, burn, baby. This girl is on fire. This girl is on fire. She's walking on fire. This girl is on fire.
Okay. Are, are y'all on fire yet?
Yeah!
That's what I'm talking about, that's, that's what we gotta have happen on, on Saturday in South Carolina. So we wanna thank our panel and our, and our moderator for the second panel. We wanna thank all of you for coming out tonight. I wanna thank Clayola and Trudy, and Tanya, come back up here, co-host girl, come on, back up here, you, you do roll in it. Do, do too, do too. And then, and on that note, we
And then, and on that note, we're gonna have our closing remarks. We do have a couple of things we want to show you whenever they give you the cue. Not show? Never show? Okay. Okay. So, so I will say that Tanya, where's Tanya? The other Tanya, Tanya Tyson. I wanna ask our team from National Coalition Black Women's Roundtable, come on up here. And so this was her debut as a panelist. I'm like, "Girl, you gotta do this now." Yes, "Thank you, Tanya." Okay. And for all the work and after, the whole team just waved. I'm gonna turn it over to Cleola and the rest of our co-hosts to give us their closing remarks for the evening.
This will be quick. You all engaged in some really highbrow discussions, deep thought discussions. You talked about what should be done. I want all of you sisters, let us remember where we came from and remember who we're talking with. We don't have to have 18 syllables in the word when we're talking to our own folk, nor do we have to have one or two dumbing it down. But we have to be mindful of who we're talking to and what we're talking about. So be you, because you know black women don't need no words to convey an informational thought, right? You know what this means, right? Okay? There was not a word spoken in that conversation at all, but everybody here knew exactly what we were talking about. So please, remember who you're talking with and talk about substance. And if you're gonna go and get people to register, register them, but go back and get them, take them to vote. But if you know they're not gonna vote the way you want our issues to be covered, leave them suckers standing on the corner and go about your business to get some real voters. Thank God for you. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Charleston. Thank you, family. Thank you, friends. Thank you, church family. Let's give Lisa and the crew another hand. Thank you so much. I thank you all for supporting everything that we do. We could not do it without you. I want to especially thank my church family. Thank you to my brilliant Dr. Marvella Ford. Thank you to the brilliant Michelle Mapp. I love you all so much. You guys are amazing. And to all of the other panelists, thank you so much, and thank you all for showing up for me. You've been doing that now for a couple of years, so I appreciate it. When I make up my mind to run for public office, I want the same crew. We're gonna do it. We're gonna do it. But I love you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Essence, for giving us the opportunity to do this. Thank you, my sisters. I love them with everything I got. So whenever they call, they know we're gonna go. We're gonna do what we have to do. We're gonna put up signs. We're gonna cook. Well, no, no, I ain't gonna cook. But we're gonna do whatever we have to do. Once again, thank you all so much. Love you. Much love.
And as the other lady said, thank you again for being here. I'm so happy to be here on behalf of Essence. And again, thank you for the support over the years as we go into our 50th year. Continue reading, continue subscribing, and continue, yes. And continue looking for our political coverage. Thanks again to Black Women's Roundtable. We always love partnering with you guys, so yeah, glad we're here.
There's lots of food. I think there's still some food left. Make sure, if you have not eaten, you eat. Get a stomach full. We started with prayer, and I want us to end with prayer. Yes? Oh, see, they always, I'm the baby girl, so my sisters always push me around. I just, just as privileged, my son and my daughter-in-law, I call her my daughter-in-law, they were on an episode of Ellen. If you Google "the husband that serenaded his wife who was having brain surgery," that's my baby boy and that's my daughter-in-law. Oh, yeah, so he's, keep her in prayer. We're talking about, they have to talk about radiation and chemo. She's strong. We try to keep her positive. And my son, he's amazing, loving on her, and we're helping him to do that. So just keep them in prayer. They're celebrities. I have to tell them, I'm still mama. Yeah, yeah, I'm still mama, but keep them in prayer. So thank you for your love and support. I know most of you have seen it, but if you haven't, just Google "a husband that serenades his wife for brain surgery."
Now, I did not know. Wow. You know, two degrees of separation. We just gonna sit on that. And we'll, and just think about just how powerful that was. It just, I shared, 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 shared. I had no idea, you know? Had no idea. I did want to, before I forget, because one of our panelists had a death in their family. That's where Natasha is. Her uncle, she has a really small, you know, has had a lot of death. So she texts me, I did want to lift her up, so lift up her and her family as they're dealing with that in Cleveland. And Crystal, Crystal? Okay. So Crystal, come on up here. Yes. And she's out of LA, right? And she's out of LA? I'm sorry. Correct myself. Kirk myself. Kirk myself. Excuse me. Labor, though. Labor, labor. Okay, just wanna give you a hug. So can, give your neighbors a hug, you know? And thank you, thank you again, Essence. Thank you for all our partners. Thank you, Roland Martin, Unfiltered. And we'll close out in prayer.
Reverend Daniels, can you come and close that side in prayer, please?
While she's coming forward to give prayer, and you all join the circle, please, as we do this, I want you to take a look at that back row next to the girl with the red hair. That's my 89-year-old mama sitting there. This has been such an exciting and informative town hall. Come on, let's give the Lord some praise for allowing us to be here. Amen. Let us pray. Father, the Red Sea didn't open up until Moses raised his hand. The Jordan didn't roll back until the preachers stepped, put their foot in it. So Lord God, we know things are not gonna change until we raise our hand and we put our foot down. Lord God, allow us to encourage each other that we have to do what is right, and that is to get out and go vote. If things are to change, we gotta make it happen. And so Father, I thank you for what our ears have heard and our hearts have received. Bless all these powerful women, that we will hold up the bloodstained banner, that we'll continue to fight until our day is done. We thank you. Bless us now as we leave this place. Continue to keep us in the hollow part of your hand. In the mighty name of Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.